Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for November 9, 2002. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes it is.
Please call the roll.
Lee.
Here.
Selajie.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Harlan.
Here.
Here.
Thank you very much. At this time, I am very happy to introduce to you two Tippler Middle School students, actually one from ALPS. That would be Grayson and one from Perry Tippler Middle, that would be Sophia Probst. So we're going to invite Grayson and Sophia to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
(Pleading) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice firm voices. Everybody understood you. This is great. It's always a pleasure to have students attending our meetings, whether they're our high school representatives or representatives from one of our other buildings, because it helps remind all of us that the reason we're here is to teach our students. And our guiding principle is students first, and so it helps us keep that in mind throughout our meetings. So Grayson, thank you very much for taking time to be with us this evening. It was a pleasure for you. And Sophia, thank you. We hope you continue your studies at Tippler and ALPS respectively. And we thank Barbara Probst, the driver, and their friend Megan. And we used to have a practice of asking the principal or someone from the school when we had students from that school presenting the Pledge of Allegiance to spend a little time with us and tell us about the great things going on in that school. And so we're delighted to have Dr. Sarah Prokett with us this evening to tell us something about Tippler, Perry Tippler Middle School that we should all know.
Thank you for having me. And first and foremost, it's an honor to be up here. And I want to start off by saying how amazing the staff at Tippler and ALPS are, and they're really dedicated to helping students grow. The power and quality of teachers can often be diminished and easily taken for granted. So I hope some of these short examples will show the greatness that is present in our district and our schools. Imagine starting a new school in a different country. How do you communicate in a new place? How do you show your ability? These struggles are encountered by many of our ESOL students daily, and time after time, we are showing success for them. Imagine you are with your twin and you've just started school in March of 2022. As sixth graders, you have to start learning phonics. Phonics would be the start of putting sounds to the alphabet letters. Now, just a few short months later, we are reading short story books where there might be a repeated pattern such as "The dog is sleeping, wake up." "The cat is sleeping, wake up." That's a phenomenal journey when you think about how complex the English language is. And right now, we have two students who love math, work hard to complete their assignments, even if that means missing recess. That's a big deal for sixth grade boys. In 2021, the average growth in literacy at Tippler for iReady for sixth graders was 116 percent. Seventh grade grew 124 percent. And eighth grade grew 127 percent. That means that all of these students were progressing at a faster rate of growing their proficiency levels, again, a direct impact of the great quality teaching staff we have. Imagine as a newcomer, when you come in to the seventh grade, and you might be reading at just a Level 1. After a few short months, you are now moving up to that Level 3 where you can take on language and eventually reach that eighth grade benchmark. Another fabulous accomplishment. When I asked my teaching staff to share little anecdotal notes, this one kind of made me smile. It was shared by a teacher who was working with a student who had very limited English proficiency. The first days were interesting. We began talking to each other through Google Translate. Then it turned into him teaching me Spanish words and phrases. Soon we were conversing. Now every day, him and his friends give me a quiz on my previous lessons to check where I'm at. It's seriously the best part of my day. This year, we had a student transfer from another school district. At their previous school, we will just say literacy was not something that they loved. Through the help with our eighth grade teacher, they have progressed. When we are working on our essay and trying to do something in an argumentative case, feedback was provided and the light bulb went off for that student. And he said something like, "So you're telling me all I have to do is just fix these two things? And I've got it?" And the teacher said, "Yes, you are doing a good job," which the student replied, "Man, I'm really good at this." So again, when you think about the confidence and the abilities of our student, they are directly impacted by our teaching staff. But this doesn't stop just within our school walls. This was an email I received, in fact, just yesterday from a community member. "I was asked to visit with the LEGO League team today at your school as a subject matter expert last night. I was blown away by the intelligence, knowledge, professionalism, all from middle schoolers. I could not believe the depth of their research and planning. What a great group of kids and coaches. I was beyond impressed and cannot wait to be asked to come back to see the finished product." These are just a few of the powerful stories that are out there, but often they don't get told in large groups, but you can see the impact that they make on students and staff. So if you were ever wondering if we are making a difference, we are. And I'm appreciative and honored that I'm able to share the great things that are happening, not only in our district, but tonight specifically at Perry Tippler and ALPS. And there are many more great stories out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Prokett.
Thank you.
And our guests are more than welcome to stay, but we also understand if you have other things on your agenda for this evening. So thanks again for coming.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is our land acknowledgement from Dr. Davis.
Yes, again, honored to share our land acknowledgements during all of our meetings, during each of our meetings, I should say. As we gather today, we'd like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the whole Chunk Nation, the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Onevego, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders past and present. We welcome the duty and the opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. The next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Is there any board member who wishes to entertain an idea of moving something in the order in which it appears on the agenda?
No.
Seeing none, we will accept the agenda then as written by acclamation. Next, we move on to board and administrative reports, starting with the board president report. This will be very quick. The board met within the last couple of weeks with Dr. Patty Vickman. Mrs. Patty Vickman, one of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards consultants. She worked with us on some goal setting with the board, which looked at engagement with members of the community. And we had set a goal for ourselves as board members of reaching out and being paired with one or more schools in the district. So all board members will be receiving an electronic survey on which you can indicate which school or schools with whom you would like to be, with which you would like to be paired. And then it'll be your responsibility to respond to that school, attend any special events, and respond to any invitations so that we leave no school behind and that every school has a liaison or contact on the board. That doesn't mean that the rest of us can't attend events in those schools. It just means we will guarantee that at least one board member will be part of that engagement goal that we have as a board. So thank you for that. Moving on then to the superintendent's report, Dr. Davis.
All right. Well, honored to have our student representatives from north and west here tonight. And we'll start at Oshkosh North with Owen.
Good evening. My name is Owen, and today I'm excited to give you the Oshkosh North November update. Okay, so as we are leaving our fall season and transitioning into winter, there's still a lot going on at Oshkosh North, specifically with our music department. There have been two choir concerts since I last spoke. In the bottom left, you can see is a picture. Our Oshkosh North choirs had their fall concert at Oshkosh West. It included all choirs and it was a very successful and good concert. And then this last weekend, Oshkosh North hosted the All-City Choral Festival where not only Oshkosh North, but also Oshkosh West and all the middle schools came and sang. On the picture on the right, you can see all the students that were singing. It was held in our fieldhouse. This is the first time this has been held at Oshkosh North. So as you can see, there were a lot of people. So yeah, it was very well attended. On the sports end, a lot has finished from the fall. Our swim and cross-country teams went to sectionals. They are not advancing to state, but still had a lot of individual success within the teams. And then our soccer team made it to the playoffs and unfortunately lost a slinger. Yesterday, our communities program at Oshkosh North hosted our mock election. So it was very successful. A few weeks ago, the communities program held voting registration. So seniors and staff were able to register right within the school for the reelection. Yesterday, our mock election, I believe, had over 800 students and staff participate.
If I could just make one comment on the mock election slide there. It's so appropriate to me that you have a picture of the name Jessie Hooper, because Jessie was a strong advocate for women having the right to vote and was a very active member of the League of Women Voters and was known statewide and nationally for her efforts on behalf of voting rights. And so I'm especially impressed by that slide. Thank you for sharing that.
What happened outside of school, a week ago, a group of students took a trip to Mexico through our Spanish classes. So it was a smaller group, but they were able to experience Day of the Dead firsthand in Mexico City. So they got back last week, and I think it was a great trip. And then moving forward for the future, as we enter the winter, there's a lot of sports starting, especially basketball. And then our madrigal singers will be entering performance season in December. And then on the right, you can see is our musical, which is hosting auditions this weekend. And then tomorrow is our Veterans Day program at Oshkosh North. So it's a big event that we always put on. It'll be at 10:00 a.m. in the fieldhouse, and there'll be performances from our choirs along with guest speaker Chris Hibbin. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Tessa, to update us on everything going on with the West Wildcats.
Yeah, so I'm very excited to be here tonight. My name is Tess Whitcomb, and I'm representing Oshkosh West. So we had a lot of big news in regards to our sports teams this month. Oshkosh West Boys Soccer did very well. They won at conference and regionals and were the sectional runner-ups. We also had eight different players who were named all-conference players. And our senior, Camden Hurley, he was named the FBA Player of the Year. Our Girls' Cross Country Team also qualified for state where they took 12th. And our Girls' Varsity Tennis Double Team of juniors Kate Conger and Keen Potter took fourth at state. And even more with sports, our Girls' Varsity Volleyball advanced to the regionals tournament where they unfortunately lost. The Equestrian Team both qualified for state and then took fourth, with each of our members receiving lots of individual awards. And just this weekend at Girls' Swim Sectionals, our Varsity Girls Swim Team qualified for state, and they'll be competing this weekend. And in the musical department, we had lots of state qualifiers and big news as well. Our one-act-play track is headed to state. We had a senior, Myra Lago, who sang in the Trouble Choir at the 2022 High School State Honors Project Concert. And we had two violinists, Michael and Brian, who participated in the State Honors Orchestra. Oshkosh West hosted their annual haunted house this year. That was put on by the Special Education Department, Global Academy Connected, and Leadership Classes. We had students dress up, have their makeup done, scary, and worked in the haunted house, scaring fellow students. I know I went through, and it was very fun. Oshkosh West Student Council hosted a blood drive a few weeks ago, and we were able to collect more than 50 units of blood. It was a very successful drive. And our dance team is going to be performing at halftime of the herd game tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And now for the superintendent's good news report for tonight. First of all, four of our band directors and the district recently performed in the Wisconsin Music Educators Association Conference in Madison as part of a Wisconsin Symphonic Winds. The program was titled "Programming for Diversity" and featured music of varying difficulty levels by composers from underrepresented demographics. A great job to these incredible music educators, and thank you for all that you do for our students. Carroll Trigger Elementary students have been enjoying the recently revamped Maker Space called the Creation Station. STEM challenges, LEGO challenges, electronic stations, and material exploration are a few of the many activities students are engaged in. Funds to support the Creation Station have come from many sources, and the school is grateful for all of those who make these experiences possible. Over 300 Webster Stanley Elementary School students and family members recently gathered for a family night. Students showed their families around their classrooms, sharing math workplace games, books from their book bins, and writing samples. Attendees also had fun using the green screen, which you can see up there. Looks like a great event, and we certainly appreciate all of the families coming out to engage with our schools. Oshkosh West Global Academy, students recently attended the Onevego County Youth Government Day. Students went to the courthouse to hear about different jobs and participate in a mock trial and a mock board session. We appreciate all of the elected officials and department leaders that make this learning a possibility for our students. Corey Kleinhans, an adapted physical education specialist, recently received the Promising Professional Award from the Wisconsin Health and Physical Education Association. This award recognizes enthusiastic young professionals in the field who demonstrate leadership, service, and personal achievement. In our district, Corey has implemented numerous new and impactful programs, including our Adaptive Sports League for high school students and our new Adaptive Motor Development Program for elementary and middle school students. We're grateful for his exceptional leadership and commitment to ensuring that all students of all abilities have access to meaningful physical education experiences. Thank you, Corey, for all you do, and congratulations. Perry Tippler and ALPS recently held their Fall Festival PBIS celebration. The celebration recognized the positive behaviors students have displayed throughout the first quarter of school. Students enjoyed music, yard games, board games, as well as hot dogs and snacks. It was like a lot of fun. Thank you to all community members for providing naming suggestions for our new elementary school through the first of two surveys, the first one which closed earlier this week. Our Facilities and Finance Committee will be taking all of the naming suggestions and create a list of finalists. A second survey will be launched in early December, asking people to pick their favorite among the finalists. The results will be provided to the school board to make a final selection. So thanks for everybody who participated in that. And at this time, I'd like to take a moment to recognize one of our own school board members, Dr. Barb Herzog, our board president, who recently received the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Distinguished Alumni Award for her professional accomplishments, as recognized by the UWO Alumni Association. Barb was recognized as a lifetime leader in education. Her career in public education spanned over 40 years and still continues today, including to this very minute. In her own words, Barb inspires all of us to continue to give back and make a difference, stating, "No matter who you are in our communities, we all have a stake in how well our students are educated to help make our communities better places for all of us to live, learn, work, and play." On behalf of the district, congratulations on this well-deserved recognition, and thank you for all that you do to support and advance public education. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I was not expecting this. Congratulations.
Just slipped it in there for the... And as a reminder, again, we have our COVID-19 plan that we're continuing to follow and using our guidelines this year that's available online if there's any questions around that from the community. And finally, just some of the places that I've had the opportunity to be in the last couple of weeks. So it's been a fun time to be able to get out and about and still enjoy this great fall weather that we're having. And that concludes the superintendent's good news report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Moving on then, we have a district administrator's supplemental report, which will be given by Mr. Considine tonight regarding the update on the referendum. So we welcome Nate to the table.
Hello. Hello and good evening. It's nice to be with you tonight. Unfortunately, Jim Fox was unable to, we had common council at the city level, so I am happy to fill in in his place. Happy to give you an update on the Vell Phillips Project. There's been a lot of great progress over the last 30 days. So at a pretty high level, continued installation of the building mechanical systems have been ongoing. As you can tell, the largest improvement has been the fieldhouse precast panels are complete. Concrete pours for the cafeteria, admin area, band and choir are also complete. You'll see photos of that shortly. Concrete topping slab for the second floor tower has been poured. Academic tower, third floor plank and structural steel is ongoing, so that third floor of the academic tower continues to rise. And then within the academic tower on first and second floor, non-load-bearing wall installation is ongoing. Steel stud and building exterior insulation is also ongoing over the last month. So a lot of trades, a lot of people on the site at the moment. Going through the photos, up in the upper left, this is a picture up on the second floor of the academic tower. This was prior to the precast plank starting to go in, in the one area. And then if I switch over to the upper right photo, that is another portion of the second floor where you can... or sorry, this is up on third floor where the third floor precast plank is set. So kind of as they work left to right in units A and B, one portion that doesn't have the precast plank and then another that does. In the middle picture, that is the insulation. It's a spray foam insulation. It's what keeps your building warm. It acts as an insulation barrier and also a vapor barrier on the building, so it's a two-in-one product. That is largely occurring right now in unit C. So over, just by the cafeteria building maintenance area, tech ed, you'll see that yellow spray foam on the building. Down in the lower left-hand corner, they're actually setting the last precast panel at the gymnasium in that photo. You can see the cables from the crane on the top of that picture. So that photo is taken from the east, and where they're working right now would be one of the entrances into the fieldhouse on the south side. The photo in the bottom right-hand corner is an exciting one. That is the main entrance of the building. You can see the shape of the media center overhanging the main entrance, and they're putting the exterior sheathing that will eventually be sprayed on, and windows will start to populate. So really starting to see the main entrance come into shape. Inside the building, starting up on the upper left, that is where we kind of ended on the outside. So that is the media center looking out, so it'll have some really nice views for that area. Down in the lower left, that would be in areas that are basically closed in from the outside. So first floor academic tower, also in unit C up in the special education classrooms, art classrooms, as well as this picture could also be referenced in the first floor in the tech ed areas. So this is an example of metal studs going up on the inside, wood blocking installed for cabinetry support, and some of the electrical roughens and things like that inside the walls before those get closed up. I'll circle back to the middle picture. The upper right picture is the second floor of the academic tower. So this is one of the collaboration areas in a few months, or in a handful of months, however we want to look at that. This will be where the lockers are as you enter into the academic bays, the collaboration areas with all of the classrooms kind of spiraling off of those. In the bottom right picture, this is a picture of the fieldhouse. As you can see, they were setting the roof joists as the precast panels came in. So this has all the precast panels in, most of the roof joists on, and they've been putting the roof deck in over the top. The central picture is the cafeteria commons area. You can start to see a small wall in the bottom portion that is for the ramp that is accessible to the stage in there. You're looking towards the admin area and the media center in the foreground. And I think it's worth noting, in case you didn't know, but the bottom right photo and the center photo both have the roof deck on in both locations. It may look a little bit funny, like there's a lot of holes in the deck. That is an acoustical deck. So part of the acoustical analysis that went into that project was determining where that is necessary and making sure the acoustics are right for those specific spaces. So purposely perforated. For the work over the next 30 days, a lot of progress to be had as they look to capitalize on the fall weather before the snow starts to fly. Topping slabs will be poured on the third floor of the academic tower. Load-bearing walls complete in the academic area, specifically in the second floor, Section B. Continued installation of building mechanical systems, so that's HVAC ductwork, piping, plumbing, and electrical in the areas A, B, C, and D. So that's everything but the fieldhouse and music and choir. Fire protection is ongoing. Steel studs and door frames will be installed inside of Section Unit D, so that's the admin area. And then in the fieldhouse, structural steel will be complete. Topping slabs will be poured, and roofing will go on as they try to enclose that space. Any questions? Well, thank you.
Well, I think Mr. Wright likes to say something.
Oh, I guess for the community's sake, because, you know, they ask a lot of questions about, is it on time? Is it on budget? Is anything being taken out? So I'll probably ask those three questions every time unless if you just add it to the monthly report, just so the community can know that all three of those things are happening, because there's some wild conversation out there sometimes.
Fair enough. So happy to report that we are on budget and tracking in a really good way. There's been no additional items removed from the project as part of, you know, we went through an early value engineering session. There's been nothing further pulled from the project. I know in our last conversation, the conversation about the bleachers came back to light, and I believe district admin has committed to making sure the bleachers get back in, and we're working through what's the right method to do so and the timing associated to it. So hopefully that's some good news for the board. As far as on schedule, I don't know that Myron has admitted one way or the other. I think their sense or attitude towards it is, whether I'm on schedule or I'm behind schedule, the date can't move, and we're going to get it done, which I can appreciate. But I... So, hopefully, that's some good news for the board. As far as on schedule, I don't know that Myron has admitted one way or the other. I think their sense or attitude towards it is, whether I'm on schedule or I'm behind schedule, the date can't move, and we're going to get it done, which I can appreciate. But I think, so they have some work to catch up on.
That's very good news that the bleachers is, bleachers are coming back in. If there was more than fifty people watching at home right now, I wish we could just, you know, message that out to everyone, because not only are we not taking things away now, we're adding something back in, which is, should be very positive for the whole community. So, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much for joining us. Our next agenda item is the non-agenda-related public forum. This provides members of the community an opportunity to share thoughts with the board either on a non-agenda or an agenda-related item. We do have one individual signed up for the non-agenda-related public forum, so I'll quickly go through the rules on that. We ask you to clearly state your name and full address, as well as the topic you wish to discuss. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Please state clearly and concisely the matters of concern, limiting your comments to three minutes. Please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel by titles or identifiable descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 920-424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. So, this evening, we have Craig Leader as our only public forum presenter.
Thanks, Barb. Thank you, Board, for listening today. So, start that clock. Here we go.
Name and address.
Oh, yes. Screwed up already. Craig Leader, 3369 Jones Court, Oshkosh, 54904. So, I'm here on behalf of myself and also the Oshkosh North community. I'd just like to take a moment to thank Dr. Davis, Drew Nihans, Jim Fox, and the entire school board for the approval and completion of the new turf field at Oshkosh North High School. Your decision over a year ago has been a game changer for Oshkosh North and our community as a whole. We have caught up to our conference foes in the FVA in terms of a turf field on campus at North. I've been the athletic director at Oshkosh North for twenty-three years, and this is the best facility upgrade we've made in Oshkosh during my time, and I want to thank each and every one of you for that. I have received dozens of compliments about the facility from our community, from our opponents, their coaches, and spectators, and game officials. The field has served the following teams and programs well this fall: Oshkosh North Boys Soccer and Football Teams and our FIAD classes, the Oshkosh West Boys Soccer and JV Football Teams, the Oshkosh Lords Boys Soccer Team, youth football and soccer teams throughout the community, adult soccer and flag football teams through the Recreation Department. My hope is that we can use this facility as a springboard in Oshkosh to take care of other needs within the Oshkosh Area School District, like Oshkosh West getting their turf field done, and it's scheduled to start construction in June of 2023, a new auditorium at North High School, an indoor practice facility, an outdoor competition complex, and an aquatic center. Each of these facilities will be a huge impact on our district and community for years to come. This is what we need to do to remain competitive in the Fox Valley. As everybody saw, the referendums that were passed last night, nobody's sitting around stagnant. Everybody is moving forward with things, and we need to continue as well. But we took a huge first step with that turf field at North High School. So, I want to commend each and every one of you on your leadership, and thank you for giving our students a chance to feel good about where they live, where they go to school, and where they play. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. There is no one who's signed up for the agenda-related public forum, so we will move on to our one and only workshop for this evening. This is the annual District-wide Data Accountability Report, led by Mrs.
Hello. I'm Julie Conrad, Director of Curriculum Assessment for the Oshkosh Area School District, and I believe this is the eleventh time I've actually given this board workshop. So, here we go. So, in here, this board workshop is directly related to Goal One and Goal Three of our strategic plan. Specifically, it's going to be reporting out on key progress indicators and metrics that tell us how we are doing towards improving student learning for all students being college current, community-ready. We'll also hit on how community engagement and how engagement with the community can help strengthen our achievement and scores here in the Oshkosh Area School District. When we talk about strategic plans and metrics and impact, you've heard me many times talking about the connection from the boardroom to the classroom, and we talk about that from a metrics piece. Also, the board talks about operating and making decisions with data, and that's what we're here today, is to take a look at where has data ended up with student learning. We are going to be concentrating on Level Three metrics, going down into Levels Four, Five, and Six is really where our schools are working and looking to improve. So, first off, the State Assessment System will be looking at ACT, ACT Aspire, Wisconsin Forward Exam. Remember that Dynamic Learning Maps is for students that qualify for alternative standards, and that's an alternative assessment in grades three through eleven. Also, as a reminder, I'll be back in December to talk about our school and the district report cards, as those will be released on November fifteenth. So, as we look at student data, it's good to be grounded in what our demographics of our school district look like in 2021, 22. And so, as you can see up there, our total enrollment and where we are with our Students with Disabilities population, how many students are economically disadvantaged, English learners, and where we are with race and ethnicity. If you think about our demographics from one year ago, our percentage of students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and English learners has stayed essentially the same. When we look at race and ethnicity, we have increased in the number of students of color that are within our school district. As we go through the presentation tonight, I really want you to think about these following statements. This is the key communication. We're going to be going through a whole lot of data, and even though data is one of my favorite things to look at and to dive deeper into, it's easy to get lost in the numbers, the graphs, et cetera. So, something to think about and some key communication pieces as we go through. First off, our high school students are recovering much faster from the pandemic than our other students within our school district. Our youngest learners have been most impacted, but our high school students have recovered much faster and are doing well, and you will see that in our data. Our school district has set very rigorous standards recently, and those are in reading and they are in policy. Right now, when you start to see the data, keep in mind that our data is lagging indicators. You are looking at data from the spring of 2022, so that's over six to seven months ago, and we have been hard at work, working on improvements, and that is through monthly rapid cycles at the elementary level in our literacy programming, so that we're responding to skill development, student-centered coaching cycles to provide support for district staff in implementing those rapid cycles, and also implementing our updated literacy resources that have been improved. And speaking of that, new literacy resources that specifically address phonological awareness, phonic awareness, phonemic awareness, phonemic awareness, excuse me, letter identification, which are science reading areas of emphasis, being implemented into the district's literacy program, and that was intentional and purposeful. And then, lastly, parents and community partners are needed to continue to support our elementary literacy instruction, and so we'll talk just briefly about what can our community members and families do to help support us as we look to continue to improve our student learning. So, let's dive in. First off, since the pandemic, there's been a lot of talk about test participation rate across the state that has been down. The Oshkosh Area School District has continued to have a high test participation rate, and you can see that in the data that's listed there. Another piece that you have seen throughout the years is what has been our ACT composite trends for our graduates. We know that students in grade eleven take the ACT, but they can take it again to improve their scores, and some students take it multiple times. This is the trend for the class of 2022, and students in here may have taken it multiple times, and you can see where our composite has basically helped study over the past few years. Also, all of the cohorts or graduating classes up there did take the ACT as juniors, so that has, remember, there was still data previously in there for not all students taking it, but now all students do. So, how successful was our overall population, our class of 2023? And we have two of those members of the class of 2023 sitting with us this evening. But essentially, our performance stayed right about the same for the class of 2023. Highlights here is writing is out of twelve, to keep that in mind, and 6.8 is actually above the state average, and we are doing well in writing. That has been an area that has increased over time, and you can see where our overall composite and scores are. Remember, that's out of thirty-six when you take a look at that. Graduation rate. Graduation rate is always like a year behind, and so this is looking at it from the class of 2021 going all the way back to the class of 2015. You can see with the class of 2020, they were one of the classes that was most impacted by the pandemic. And then, we have, just as I foreshadowed, we had bumped back up for the class of 2021. I'm going to foreshadow for you again. You can expect to see an increase when we get to the class of 2022. But we know that not everybody is on a four-year graduation plan. We know that some students need more time to complete those graduation credits. And so, if we take a look at that, our state and our school district, we look at four-year rates, a five-year rate, a six-year rate, and a seven-year rate, so going back to the class of 2018, because we do have students that come either back to us or access other programs to help them get that high school diploma. And so, as you can see, we, for like the class of 2019, we're currently at a ninety-four point four percent rate, and our seven-year rate is at ninety-two, ninety-two point seven percent. So, we do have programming in place to help students get that diploma. So, we also get questions about how does the Oshkosh Area School District compare to other districts when it comes to graduation rate? We say the state, but what does that, what does that really mean? The Oshkosh Area School District is considered to be a large district. We do have two high schools in our district, and if we start to look at other large districts across the state, you can see where we compare in graduation rate. Once again, remember, this is the class of 2021, and you can see the impact once again on the pandemic when it came to graduation and credit attainment with that. So, Oshkosh is above the state average and is towards the top when it comes to large districts. Another way to look at our four-year graduation rate is to look at our athletic conference. And so, when we take a look at our athletic conference, this is who we compete against when it comes to athletics, and you can see where Oshkosh is compared to the state and other pieces. One piece of feedback that I did get was to present, what are the percent of students that are economically disadvantaged in the school district compared to the graduation rate? And so, that data was inserted into this chart for you to see where we are compared to our school districts and athletic conference when it comes to graduation rate. So, I'm going to pause for a second, and before we move from graduation rate and go into reading, are there, like, because there is, there's a lot of information in here. I wanted to pause for a second. Was there, were there any questions or comments for, on graduation in our graduating classes? So, going into, going into English Language Arts or Reading, Literacy, as we affectionately call it, our school district has set metrics and goals for reading and literacy, and you are well aware that in Policy 2131.01, we have set the following very lofty stretch goals for our school district, to be at seventy-five percent for students K2 at benchmark by 2025, forty-five percent of students to be proficient or advanced, grades three through eight, and we'll see where we are at by 2025, sixty percent of students proficient and I-ready. And then, a goal that we have that's not in policy, because we are working with our high schools as well, is that by 2025, fifty percent of students in grades nine through eleven, as evidenced by the pre-ACT and ACT. And by the way, you'll see that coming up, that ACT Aspire has been phased out, and the state of Wisconsin's going to be using the pre-ACT for grades nine and ten. It's better aligned, and we will be, we'll be in good shape with that as well. So, how did we do with our goals? And you saw, these are our assessments, so let's get into this. So, when we look at grades K1 and 2, we are using PALS, the Phonological Awareness Literacy Screener for K through 2, and you can see our data going from spring of 2016 to spring of 2022. So, currently, as a district, last spring, remember, this is a lagging indicator, we had fifty-eight point six percent of students in grades K through 2 that were at benchmark. So, where is that compared to what we were looking for to hit our mark? And so, if we take a look at what we wanted for our predicted trend in red, that target is where we want to hit each year in order to reach that seventy-five percent proficiency. We needed to, or we were predicting we wanted to hit sixty percent of students at benchmark. This past spring, we actually hit fifty-eight point six percent of students at benchmark. So, that's where we currently are. We're already actively, you know, we're actively working on getting students where they need to go, and we indicated some of those in our key communication pieces. So, this is where we are with hitting that target. Then, I-ready. I-ready we gave last spring, that's our internal data. We don't have to be, we don't have to wait for it to be released. And so, where we were in the spring was forty-two percent of students in grades three through eight were at a proficient level in the spring of 2022. So, this spring, we are looking to hit the target of forty-eight percent, and by 2025, hit sixty percent. So, no new data point yet, because we had that data when we set these goals.
When will that be given?
In this, it'll be this spring, so it'll be in May of 2023. So, I-ready is a diagnostic that's really meant to measure from the fall to the spring, how did a student, how did a student grow? So, like, for example, when Dr. Pocat had mentioned about I-ready growth of like a hundred and twenty-seven percent or a hundred and sixteen percent, that was the percent of growth from the fall to the spring. So, we are absolutely taking a look at that data.
Do you take little samples mid-year since it's our reading to?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, I can speak, actually, just today, I was working with Lisa Duxbury, who's our Secondary Literacy Coordinator, and we were talking about, we have a, we have a cycle or we have a dipstick on where students are in sixth grade with reading, actually should be completed by tomorrow, and so we'll take a look at that. But we will do a winter or a mid-year benchmark, and then we'll do the spring. So, no, we are not waiting until the end of the year to figure out whether students have grown or not. So, doing those rapid, rapid cycles, doing those rapid checks, so that we can maneuver and adjust based on student needs is exactly what we're doing.
No, Owen, I like how we got our results mailed home from our sixth and eighth grader, so we know, as parents, we know right where they're at with that, so that's good too. So, thank you for that.
Sure.
I would say one of the probably more, most important structural changes that we made this year, and this would be for the elementary schools specifically, and we'll be working on scaling that up, has been not only using the I-ready assessments, which would be that three times a year dipstick, but also looking at rapid cycles of improvement on a monthly basis, when we're identifying specific skills that are, skills that we need to build on throughout the year. So, for example, we have a set of skills for all first graders to be able to be proficient at, and we have that teased out then by month. So, an area of focus for September, October, November, for each month, at the end of the At the end of each month, and our directors have worked with our teaching staff and our coaches to create what we call formative assessments. So they would be, our ability to see how many kids were proficient at that particular skill. And so month to month, we know how students are building on that particular skill, so we can be more responsive. So we've really gone, and this is a, this is a big leap. So we've really gone, I think, institutionally over the last couple of years from, you know, going from, you know, once a year, when you're looking at the forward exam, to the last couple of years with the I-ready exam and it's three times a year. And right now at our elementary programming, and this is brand new, but this is every month that we can see. So it allows us to be much more responsive to the needs of our students in front of us. And then we're building our methods around our ability to respond and group students to be able to boost them up in particular skills while still gaining the skills that they need moving forward. So it's that level of responsiveness that, that our new, the new version of our literacy program is built around. That's currently happening at, at our elementary school. And all of those skills then are aligned with I-ready, which are also aligned with the forward exam. So that's how we're going to move the needle and how that trajectory is going to go to where it needs to go. And we'll know that, you know, by the time we get to a lagging indicator of the forward exam that's talking about last spring, any of us should be able to tell you by December how much progress we've made, what hotspots we have. And we're going in and pushing in with coaches and pushing in with extra teaching support to be able to bring those kids up. And we've, we've had it set up right now, and Julie and Kim and I, you know, just met on this last week. We have it set up where, you know, teachers have an identification of that assessment at their classroom level. The principals have a dashboard of every classroom in their buildings, so the elementary principals. So on a spreadsheet, they can look and see where are their hotspots, where do they need maybe spend a little extra time or call for more support. What we started last week, and we'll do this on a monthly basis, is myself and our directors sitting and looking at the spreadsheet that shows the entire district. So on a monthly basis, I'll be able to look at the entire district, right? And look at per skill, where are hotspots? And then how are we, my question is, then how are we supporting our teachers and our students in that space? And that'll be happening on a monthly, on a monthly basis for each one of our skills as we're moving forward. So we're starting that at the elementary school, because we can't do that system-wide all at once. But that's the structure that we plan on building from the elementary school to middle school to the high schools, because it's really just teasing out those essential standards and skills that kids need at each level and to make sure that we can be as responsive as possible with our resources in real time for students and parents as we're moving forward. So the nice part about that cycle is, it's also very applicable to like a math situation, right? And so as we're building this thing out, we're looking at our core skills and be able to identify those essential standards and benchmarks that kids need to make and really building a, a responsive system of instruction, much more than we've had historically. So I, I just want to credit Julie and, and Kim and all of our directors and, and for their work. And then a lot of work went in with our coaches and our teachers over the summer to be able to really kind of solidify this. So there's a lot of work that went behind it. But I, I just wanted to lift that up, like in this presentation, because, you know, the, the data tonight is going to look like, we're definitely a work in progress and we know that. But there, there's some real things that we've made some significant progress on. And I think setting up a system that's going to be sustainable into the future for our improvement, so. Just wanted to provide that.
Julie, I have a question.
Sure.
Are all students being tested monthly or those that are just at or below proficiency level?
I'm going to invite up Dr. Kim Brown.
So, well, how we're working this right now is all students are being tested. We're doing a pre-test and a post-test. And then even after the post-test, we're still listing the students who have not made proficiency. And then we're coming back, we're continuing the cycle with them, even though we started a new assessment. We're working with the teachers to figure out, how does that look? And how can we continue building that skill in order to get all of our kids to be proficient? Because the skills build on each other and so they definitely need to become proficient in order to continue on the cycle, right? So, great question.
I'm wondering if teachers are feeling stressed about the loss of instructional time?
The assessments are really quick. So they're, the teachers are, I, I will say, teachers are feeling stressed right now. I think there is, there's accountability of what does this look like? Our coaches are wrapping around them right now, because it's like, okay, so if our kids aren't here, now what? And so really coming up alongside them. Dr. Kuhop, the literacy director, and myself have also been going into classrooms and doing some literacy audits to see what's happening in the classrooms and what does that look like? And that's helping us know, okay, this is what professional development looked like. This is how it's being used. And then what else do they need? And so we've been able to differentiate what we need to do in order to help support teachers. So we're really taking a, a deeper look at that. In addition, the principals have made time during the Wednesday collaboration for teachers to work together in planning and to make sure that they are able to do that during, you know, that day-to-day time too. So we're really trying to wrap around everybody, so everybody feels successful in moving this work forward.
Thank you.
I can also.
Selaji Ugle has a comment or question?
I don't know if you're, my question also actually has to do with instructional time, so I don't know if maybe you were going to answer it.
Yeah, I, I was going to talk a little bit about instructional time and assessments. When we think about like how informative assessments are taking really quick dipsticks with I-ready, I think that when we say assessment, everybody starts to think of, oh, the full-blown I-ready or we're taking the forward exam. We're talking about quick, short shots of very focused, like it's just going to take a few minutes working with a student in order to do that assessment. Because we're very cognizant that if you, like, if you're, like, if you keep testing and testing, it's like, we need to be spending the time on instruction and working with students. So that's a specific area, we know it's got to be quick, it's got to be accurate, it's got to be valid and get us right back into instruction.
So, thank you for that, that is helpful. My question around instructional time is, with these rapid improvements and the focus on like priority standards, are there pieces, no, let me rephrase that. Is that all fitting into the standard literacy block that already existed in elementary school or is that block expanding?
It is in the traditional block.
Okay, it fits in that block.
Is she really clarified that time at every grade level and what that time, how, how you fit everything in
Okay.
during the hundred and fifty-minute block? And so that has been very instrumental in order to support our teachers.
Okay, thank you. That's what, after we left the education committee meeting, I, after getting to this information, I kept thinking of things and that was one of the questions that I had is wanting to make sure students weren't missing out on social studies or science or recess or anything for this targeted practice. Okay, thank you.
Do, do you guys feel like you have everything you need from us as board members and to, you know, for, to do this effectively?
I think we're, we're putting things together. The student-centered cycles are going, or the student-centered coaching is really instrumental in order to help support our teachers. And of course, in some of our buildings, we don't have someone who's devoted just to student-centered, student-centered coaching. And so that, that is a little bit of a hardship for some of our buildings. But when we, that's a piece that we will take a look at as a district to come back to you at some point.
And I, I do have one more question. Is the DRA an assessment that we're still using?
We are using a different assessment that's similar to that right now. But so we, we shift this, so we're still utilizing that, because we still want to know how our students are doing with comprehension. But we have moved away from that.
Okay, thank you.
As a parent who's had kids that have excelled and/or needed tutors to excel, you know, where they've lagged, I do really appreciate the responsiveness, you know, and the ability for parents to know more quickly and for teachers to know more quickly, you know, as to where a, a child is. And then to get those resources there in a quick manner, I, I think that that's a really, really good thing so that we're not losing kids in the cracks and so that all students are being assessed adequately and so that we're supporting students, you know, and hopefully staff and the whole system like it needs to be so that we can make the strides that we all desperately want to make, you know? And everyone wants to make these strides, so, so thank you.
So one other thing when we're talking about being responsive is that when you were talking about losing students through the crack, I also want to point out that when we're responsive, we're also looking for who is a student that needs more of a challenge? Because we have to make sure that we are stretching all students as well. So when we're talking about all, all means all or students first, there's also the piece of that we have students that need a challenge. And are we appropriately challenging them? Are we appropriately stretching them? And are we ensuring that all students, all students grow? So that's another, that's another piece of this, that's another piece as well, so. So going into the forward exam, sometimes we hit our targets and sometimes we don't hit our targets. And so this would be an example here of, we were looking for grades three through eight to hit the target of thirty-four point five percent across the grade levels, three through eight. We were, we're at thirty point nine percent. So then we take a deeper look at this, you know, why didn't we hit this target? Where, where are we at? And so when we take a look at this, we have some, well, for, oh, I'm sorry. First of all, this is the trend across time of grades three through eight when it comes to ELA proficiency trend. And you can see our need to make a change. So then when we're looking, this is where I was at, where we were looking at grade levels, we absolutely did have grade levels that did hit our target. And so when we look at this, if, if you look at grade three, remember when we talked about our youngest learners were most impacted by the pandemic across the, across the state, but in particularly here in the Ashgashiri School District, our three, our third graders have definitely been impacted. So that was one, that was one piece of it. Our fifth graders, our fifth graders were shining for us when it came to ELA. And you could also see that in their I-ready scores as well from this past spring. So then, one of our talking points is that our high schools have recovered faster from the pandemic. And as you can see from ACT Aspire, this is ninth and tenth graders, where our ninth and tenth graders are performing in ELA compared to the, the state. So we had an increase this past spring, so way to go, ninth and tenth graders.
I have a question, Julie.
Yes.
The slide before between the eighth graders
Yep.
and the ninth and tenth graders, I mean, that's a, that's a very large gap. How, what, what do you, how do you manage the eighth graders that are now going into high school?
Exactly. So that was some of the planning that we did this summer, is like, what is going to be our response? And how are we going to be programming, lifting up, et cetera, students that need more support at the high school level? So depending on, depending on the group of students, whether they were students with disabilities, English learners, like, we have specific plans and we had specific programming in place to, to be able to assist students to get up to grade level.
So in December, when you do your dipstick, we'll see if your plan worked?
Yes.
Cool.
Mm-hmm, correct. Correct. So then when we get into, here we had ACT Aspire and then getting into eleventh grade ACT with ELA. And one question that I did get was, so are you basing proficiency on the ACT just based on like grammar? No, ELA for the state of Wisconsin on the ACT is, is a combination of the English score, the writing score, and now I'm going to get the, the other, English score, the writing score. Reading, thank you, thank you, and the reading score, so. So that's the combination for that. So then, we also like to know how we are compared to other districts. And so we have the district listed on the left, percent economically disadvantaged. And then over time, where Ashgash is in our other school districts. It was also requested that we put where demographics are for each of the, the school districts on here. And so two thousand twenty-two is the number, the percent proficient, and this is grades three through eight listed to the right and where we are compared to our neighboring school districts. Go ahead.
I, I remember when we talked about this in committee, I, I always hesitate to compare ourselves to our neighboring, because it's not apples to apples, it's not even, that's like apples to trucks. So I am one of the ones that asked for us to put in our economically disadvantaged rates as well. But if, if you were to look at per pupil spending, would Ashgash be among the lowest on that list too? Compared to, say, what the per pupil spending is for Kimberly?
I did not put that data in there.
That's okay.
And I would, I would, we can find out, but I wouldn't.
I would think that we would guess that Ashgash would be one of the lower-spending districts on that list, especially if you're, you know, Kimberly would obviously be on top.
So I think we have an addition to our report for next month that we'll put in there.
Yeah, because I think it's important to know that, you know, a lot, some of these high-performing schools are getting significantly more support financially than we are. And so as a low-spending district, we do the best we can with what we have, so.
Julie, can you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just.
Go ahead. I didn't.
One of the things we talked about at the committee was something you, you talked about earlier when you started this, which was you prefaced it by, the younger learners are the ones that are, you know, in
Correct.
the right word, less than where they, we want them to be. But if you go back a slide, that's where we looked at it and said, wow.
This is where our eleventh graders are.
Our eleventh graders are really doing awesome. And so that was the trend of, we're getting them there. And we talked about this, I feel like, the same conversation last year.
Correct.
We're getting them to where we want them to be, but where could they be if we're better off at a younger age too? So I think it's, as you talked about data points, I just want to point that out, that we're obviously getting them where they want to be when we want them to head out into the world, but there's rooms.
And so that's why, starting with found, like, early literacy foundational pieces, that's, that's where we're starting. Because we want to see this move, we're not going to get this to move unless we're starting, building that foundation.
Julie, Stephanie, I think you bring up a really good point around the per pupil spending. Can you also add data around like the teacher to student ratio in next month's data? Because I know that's a big factor in student success as well. Thank you.
And then, one other thing.
We're going to be so data-heavy.
Sorry, but. Sorry, but that chart and those scores matched exactly up, basically in line with how many students were economically disadvantaged in that percentage, you know? So.
On the next slide.
On the next slide, on the next slide.
That one.
Oh, yeah.
The scores of how many students are proficient or advanced, you, you could, it goes in order, right? So just out of curiosity, and I should have did this before the meeting, if it would have popped in my head now, is there any mechanism within the state funding system that takes into consideration your economically disadvantaged percentage? Or is that something we could advocate for? Because that is definitely a state, that's got to be a statewide trend and match, you know, with the, anyhow.
I would say it'd be a good discussion for the legislative.
Okay, good, that's what I was thinking. There needs to be some advocacy on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and you'll see that across the state. Like, if you were to line the four hundred and twenty-six districts up across the state, you'll see a pretty, pretty significant correlation.
I, I may have a data slide for that for you next month when it comes to district and school report cards.
Okay, good. Sometimes I get some thoughts, sometimes they're good, sometimes not, but that was a thought, so.
And, and with that said, I think it's important to, it's also important to point out, and we talk this, about this a lot, that doesn't mean we don't buck the trend, right?
Right.
That doesn't, that's not an excuse or a crutch for us. Like, our, our job is to be able to serve every family with where they are and to make sure that they have as many opportunities as anybody. So we're, we're fully committed to that. Sometimes that means extra resources, you know, in particular places. So, so, so I wanted to also bring that, you know, to the table.
And this, this follows historically the concept that there are two main variables when it comes to predicting performance of students on standardized tests. And one of them is socioeconomic level, which you've indicated bears out the fact that if you have a higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students, you would expect your scores not to be as high. And the other variable is the mother's level of education. If we have children coming from single-parent families, more likely than. If we have children coming from single parent families, more likely than not, it's going to be the mother who is raising those children. And if she doesn't have a high level of education, and plus taking her time away to work and support that family, that's another variable. But, but socioeconomic status has for long been a variable that we don't seem to have addressed fully as a US society, let alone an Oshkosh community, or Wisconsin state for that matter.
I, I just, but at the end of the day, we have committed that all students are going to be college career and community ready. And whatever community that they're entering in, we are, we are preparing them for that, for that community, wherever their choices, hopes and dreams take, these are just data points, right?
Right.
And so data doesn't, data is not emotional, it doesn't have a heartbeat and it doesn't deserve an emotional response. It deserves action from us, right?
Well, and I was just going to add, the best way to improve that socioeconomic status here in our community is through education.
Absolutely.
So it's a cycle, they're connected.
All right. So going into comparison between districts, there's also like, what does that trend look like over, over time? This is, this is like a whole lot of data, but you can tell the colors are the, are the years and you can see where the trends have been. And you can see across districts, what's happened with the pandemic and what the trends have been over time. And our trends very much mirror what's going on with our, within our sister districts. So like, when you take a look at the trends, and this is for ELA. All right, so I'm going to, we have done a lot of talking and dialogue, which is awesome. But this is the, the stop for just the ELA portion here. Are there any other comments or questions?
I just had a comment in looking at that slide, it's, it's, it's not unique to Oshkosh, the, the gap in, in the numbers. But, I mean, it's happening statewide, countrywide, correct? Is that a fair assessment?
The dip, like, you can see the dip in the, from the pandemic, correct?
From the pandemic, the learning dip.
Correct.
It's, it's, you know, not unique to Oshkosh. Is that fair to say?
That is fair to say.
Yeah.
But it's, it's our job to, how fast do we recover from that, right?
Exactly.
And how do we, how do we get kids ready?
So you could see that the areas on the left that are maybe less economically disadvantaged are recovering quicker than other areas. So, you know, yes, they're data points and yes, they're, they're real students, you know, they, they mean real people, but that's interesting as well.
I do have a question specific to literacy. Kind of gets to a point Mr. Wright brought up about, you know, if the two of you feel like you have everything you need from the board to help our students improve. And it was mentioned that there's not a interventionist that's specific for the students at each school. My understanding is we have a reading interventionist, interventionist assigned to every school, but the, some of them are working with students and coaching teachers. So there's kind of that split. After I left that meeting, I wondered, are we still doing reading recovery? I believe that's a first grade program, correct? And are those the reading interventionists that are doing that? Is that? Yeah. Thanks.
Our reading interventionists are doing reading recovery and the interventions unless, so every school's a little bit different?
Right.
So it depends, right?
Well, so I guess where I'm getting at with that question is if a reading intervention, interventionist is at a school and doing reading recovery, are they still able to have adequate amount of time to help kindergarteners, second, third, fourth, and fifth? Because I know reading recovery is just first grade.
So at the elementary level, we've really tried to separate that. So the people who are doing reading recovery are also doing the interventions. And so they're more working with our K, they're not doing the student centered coaching, that's the other, if there's two people in the building. So that's what the other person is doing. But if you are the reading recovery and interventionist, you're still going to be working with your K one-two team because they have the greatest expertise and skill with that so that they can help support them.
At that age level, that makes sense.
As well.
Okay. I just always wondered, I wish there was, and maybe there is, I don't know, a program because reading recovery is just one-on-one, which I think is great. A lot of students do need one-on-one. I wish we had a program that could bring in more than one-on-one.
And so the expertise that the people have from doing reading recovery also helps lift so that when they are doing small groups or working with teachers or going into classrooms to help support, like, it, it, like, it is a win-win for the school when you have somebody who has that expertise. So it, it does work out even though, you know, there is some one-on-one time as well.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Just been on my mind.
Thank you for sharing more.
Been on my mind since last week.
Right. Any other pieces before we move on to mathematics?
That's on my ELA.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to math. Right. We may not have math goals and policy, but we have set district-wide math goals internally. And you can see from the forward exam, we're looking at fifty percent of students to be proficient by twenty twenty-five. For pre-ACT and ACT, fifty percent of students. And then in grades three through eight for math I-ready, we are looking to have students at sixty-two percent. And if you're wondering, there was, these were not arbitrary numbers that were set. We did like predictive calculations to figure out where could we, with stretch, right? Where could we, where could we be? So. So let's look at spring I-ready first in grades three through eight. This was last spring. We had forty-four percent of our students in grades three through eight were at grade level. We'll give the next, just like we do in reading, they'll have the, they'll have the dipstick midwinter. We'll do, give the assessment in spring. And we are looking to hit fifty percent of students this, this spring for I-ready, for math, grades three through eight. For the forward exam in math, grades three through eight, we were at thirty-two point four percent proficient last year. We needed to hit thirty-six point four percent to stay on target. And we did, grades three through eight, we hit that at thirty-six point seven percent. So you can see like what the graphs are going to start to look like as we, as we go through with hitting targets. So to go deeper into that, this is our trend over time. This is once again, grades three through eight combined together. And you can see we were at thirty-two point four and at thirty-six point seven this school year, three through eight. But let's go a little bit deeper into where we are with grade level. Fifth grade, once again, racked it for us this school year. And you can see where we were with third grade, fourth grade, sixth grade, a little, sixth and seventh grade were there. And then eighth grade, like I mentioned last year, we are continuing, like regionally, eighth grade is like a dip. And then you're going to see here in just a second, when we get to ninth grade, we pop like right, right back up. So right now, we're currently in a curric, we're looking at a curriculum, we're looking at our curriculum right now. And we may, like, when we talk about what can you do, we may be coming to you in, in the near future saying that we would like to look at some revisions, you know, based on that. So there's a new addition of CPM that may be coming out that we would like to take, college preparatory mathematics, that we want to take a further look at. So then, once again, then going into grades nine and ten, ACT Aspire. So you can see where we are with math. And then for 11th grade, there's been like a statewide trend and a little bit of trend downward overall in math, but we're still way outperforming the, the state when it comes to proficiency.
I look forward to when that literacy looks just like that.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll get there. So when we take a look at compares, comparing districts for the, this is the forward exam. When we take a look at math, we have the same table set out here. And you can see where we are, grades three through eight, when it comes to math, with percent proficient. And then here are our comparisons over time. And you can see from, I can, you can see directly on this graph for like Oshkosh and you can see the impact of the pandemic, right there in our, our forward exam data. So, okay, let me back up. So that's, that was math. So questions on math before we go into other subject areas? Right. Going into science, science is assessed in grades four and eight with the forward exam. And so you can see where we are with proficiency. Our eighth graders performed nicely. And so then what has been our trend over time? And you can see our trend, we were on, then the pandemic, and we're on a, we're on an upward trend back with science, grades four and eight.
Can I just make a comment?
Absolutely.
I, I always think that math and science kind of are the same side of the brain.
Yep.
So I find it really interesting that we do so well in eighth grade math, but we don't in eighth, I'm sorry, in eighth grade science, but we don't in eighth grade math. There's something that's missing there.
So that's why, yeah, that's why we're looking at, right now, we're looking at curriculum and we're looking at, we're looking at alignment. And we're looking at that regionally, like our sister districts also use CPM or college preparatory mathematics. And we're experiencing the same thing. So we're looking at, we're looking at that alignment, in particular for eighth grade. That math alignment is not necessarily the case when you get into like high school. So right now, that's the middle school, we're looking to figure out what's the mismatch. So we're feeling like that's curriculum right now.
Okay.
So taking a look at science, this is in, this is ACT Aspire, science and the percent proficient compared to the state. And this is grades nine and 10. This is the trend in science for grade, grade 11. And I put down here for context, because when, context, because when we look at percent proficient, sometimes like we're thinking, what's the proficiency needed in ACT language, like out of thirty-six? And so Oshkosh is at a nineteen point six. We need to start thinking about what's the average ACT score when it comes to science. So then when we look at social studies, social studies is forward exam grades four, eight, and 10. And you can see where we are with proficiency with social studies. Our eighth graders did well, along with our 10th graders when it came to proficiency. And then what has been our trend? And so for grades four, eight, and 10, you can see our trend in social studies for four, eight, and 10, fifty-six percent. So any questions on science and math trends? So this next portion is where we're going to be looking at our subgroups and looking at data when it comes to diversity and equity. So a couple of things to keep in mind is that a student comes to us with many, with many backgrounds. And a lot of times those been, those backgrounds intersect. So to give you a, a perspective of what student backgrounds look like within our district, when you, when we have students with disabilities, fifty-six percent of students with an IEP or fifty-six of percent of students with disabilities are also economically disadvantaged. When we think about English language learners, seventy-three percent of our English learners are economically disadvantaged. And when we think about with race and ethnicity, thirty-two percent of our white students are economically disadvantaged. Students of color, sixty-eight percent are economically disadvantaged. So just something to really keep in mind that when we start talking about, you know, what are, you know, what are going to be, what are our strategies? How are we going to approach this? That this is, this is complex and there's many different ways that a student's background and pieces that they bring to the classroom intersect. So first off, we'll start with our older learners looking at ACT. And so this is over time, this is the percent proficient based on race and ethnicity for ACT ELA. So this is our 11th graders. There are going to be years where you're going, where is the, where is the bar or where is the color for that particular race or ethnicity? There has to be a minimum of twenty students at that particular grade level at that particular time that took that assessment to be able to report out the data. And so it just so happens for that 11th grade class, there weren't enough students to report that proficiency, that proficiency score. So you can see where our students are with ELA when it comes to, when it comes to race and ethnicity. When we look at the ACT ELA proficient and its economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged, you can see where students are performing. Blue is economically disadvantaged, red is not. And you can see the percentages of students that are proficient in ELA. This is grade 11. When we look at students without disabilities versus students with disabilities, students without disabilities are in blue, students with disabilities are in red. And these are students that are taking the ACT in proficiency in ELA. Moving on into math, this is for the ACT, grade 11, percent proficient, race and ethnicity. And you can see where we are proficiency-wise, based on race. Students without disabilities versus students with disabilities when it comes to math and percent proficient. Economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged for grade 11 ACT math. Going into the forward exam, so this is grades three through eight, looking at ELA percent proficient. This is students with disabilities versus students without disabilities when we look at ELA. Taking a look at forward exam math, students with disabilities and students without disabilities, percent proficient. Forward exam ELA, economically disadvantaged, not economically disadvantaged, percent proficient. And this is grades three through eight. Forward exam math, same data points, economically, not economically disadvantaged. And you can see some movement here in both, both areas. Going into the forward exam for ELA, race and ethnicity, you can see the trend over time in each of those backgrounds for students and their percent proficient and their performance. Forward exam math, you can see percent proficiency and their performance over time in each of the areas. Forward exam math, this is grades three through eight, English, English learners versus English proficient students. A nice growth for our English learners in mathematics. And then I'm going to stop there. So.
Yeah.
Let's, let's take a, let's, let's be real about, let's be real about where we are in the Oshkosh area school district and where, where our students are. And we have, we have work to do.
Yeah.
All right. Just as Dr. Davis said earlier, that, you know, the data about economic disadvantage is helpful to know, just to know where our students are coming from, but that does not mean we can't get them to where they need to be. And that just really resonates to me, resonates with me here on these data points too. We know that for whatever reason, our black students are not performing as well as other students. And that's not why. It's not because they aren't capable or because we don't have an obligation to get them there. But we know the data is telling us that we're not failing at that right now. I don't necessarily have a question or anything for that. I mean, I'd love to hear what we are doing to help address that, but.
Yeah.
I think it's, yeah, I mean, I think it's one of the great opportunities. And as we described before, I mean, first things first, it's about skill development, right? And making, and getting a system that's as responsive as possible for all of our students and responding to what their needs are. I think the opportunity in literacy specifically also is around affirming identities, right? And, and affirming spaces, you know, where kids are coming from and who they are, who their communities are. So that, you know, I, I think in a, in a real sense, literacy, I think, provides a really good opportunity to really dig deeper into identity. You know, we talk about, you know, books being windows and mirrors, you know, some mirrors where kids can see themselves and windows to where. mirrors where kids can see themselves and windows to where they can see different worlds that are beyond themselves. And what that can provide then to a classroom and to, you know, to an individual student is significant. So I think being able to, you know, in our best sense, when we're looking at our 150 minutes, you know, per day in literacy, we certainly are, you know, affirming, as I had mentioned earlier, the skill development is really important. Another important part of that is the conversations that come from those stories, the comprehension, the critical thinking. And that's a lot of where, when we look at our classroom libraries, when we look at the books that we're providing, making sure that that matches, you know, what our demographic, who our demographic really is, right? And so that's something that we just continue to be conscious of and work through as we're, as we're moving through this.
Okay. Go ahead. The last bullet point is parents and community partners needed to support literacy instruction. What efforts have we made as far as the district to gain more volunteers?
Yeah, so, so that's, so from a volunteer standpoint, I would say that's in development. Right now, you know, a lot of it is communication regarding our, the assessments that we're providing, both from a monthly basis at parent teacher conferences, as we're getting through our I Ready scores to make those more transparent. At, at a state level, I'm on the reading advisory board for the State Department of Public Instruction. One of the, the work that we did on the front end of that last year was around parents and community partners and how do we engage? And so, so we've got some tools that are being developed right now that is, is part of my work that I'll have with, with Julie and Kim for the second semester to start working with, building teams around, around tools, and I'll give you some examples. So one of the examples is some coordinated efforts, and these are specifically with our reading council is looking at 4K through second grade, so kind of early literacy. But one of the tools is called empathy interviews, right? And so making sure, so as we're talking to parents, bringing parents in to be able to talk, or going to community centers to be able to talk to parents around what does literacy look like in your space? The idea is that, you know, we can affirm literacy, you know, in every home, in every, in every community. So what does that look like from their space? And then how can we bridge that literacy knowledge from their home to what we need performed in the classroom? And what are those gaps that, that looks like? So as a way to better understand where, where our families are coming from is one. Two is doing just a, a, a community kind of asset audit, if you will. So within, within, and this is thinking about individual neighborhoods, so when you're looking at your neighborhood schools, is what are the assets that you have in your neighborhoods that help affirm literacy opportunities? So local neighborhoods, community centered, boys and girls clubs, you know, that type of thing? What access to our students have, you know, within their school community? And getting that mapped out and then making sure that that's part of our communications to parents and how we can get plugged in sessions. And some of that then is going to identify where our gaps are, you know? And then it's going to be strategically, when we're working on partnerships, we're working on partnerships specifically, you know, in particular areas, so we're not just doubling up, we're not saying, well, everybody needs X, Y, or Z. It's going to be, have to be specific to the school. And how we develop those partnerships then is something we're going to have to really have a community conversation on to make sure that we have those partnerships. I think the advantage that we'll have in doing that second semester and in the upcoming years as we're developing this is we'll be able to have much better specific data on like what, what support do we need in which areas, right? We're going to, we're going to have a much better idea of that on the fly as we go, that we'll be able to respond, you know, better with our programming and with a lot of the support that we have. Because we can say, we'll go to the public library, right? But it's much more informative for us to be able to be a partner with the public library to say, we know that our first and second graders are struggling with this particular skill or with this particular area of literacy. Can we develop some, intentionally develop some programming to help support our students and families like beyond the school and make sure that there's alignment like in that space? We have a difficult time doing that unless we're really, you know, measuring on a regular basis and are able to be responsive at a school level. So I think we're well positioned in our new processes to be able to form more meaningful partnerships, to be able to, you know, really be strategic about where those gaps are. But that, you know, that takes some time, and that's, that's really not anything that, it's very difficult for teachers to do that as you're in the mix, right? And so that's, you know, thinking about how are we, you know, using our directors, our supports, our community partners to be able to help do some of that coordination as we're moving forward. So that's happening, that's part of the advisory committee on a state level. But that's something out of that group that I'm bringing directly to Ashkash to be able to create some of those partnerships.
So to, to talk about something that can happen tomorrow is that right now in our community, I think there's, there's this perception with volunteers that we're still in like COVID, where we're still in COVID protocols. You know, volunteer, volunteers are, like, we're wel, you're welcome to come into, you're welcome to come into school. And so right now, as teachers are working, like elementary teachers are working in their classroom, having family, like having family or community members come in as a volunteer, many hands make the work a lot lighter, correct? And so can you, can we have classroom volunteers to come in and help us as we're doing like groups or giving small assessments or those types of things to help with that? That's something, and we have families and community members that are doing that right now. So if you're interested in doing that, reaching out to your schools, and we can get you hooked up as a volunteer.
There's just a lot of very qualified people that have time in this community that love to do this, but don't even know that it's an opportunity. I wouldn't think they may, but.
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. What other supports and interventions and resources are we pouring into making sure that these achievement gaps are closing for marginalized students?
So taking a, so going back to what's, what's up here, we have put in a lot of resources when it comes to like our Esther funding and talking about like what have we, what have we done? So like literacy resources, we've spent additional Esther dollars when it comes to those and putting those resources into classrooms at the elementary and at the middle level. So that's one, that's one piece. And making sure that those resources represent our students that are in the classroom. So when we were talking about windows and mirrors, that our resources are intentionally diverse, if that makes sense. So that's, so that's one. The other piece of this is that when we're thinking about resources, we're just now into these cycles and processes, like we just finished up the, the month of October. We're going to know more about like what we need as we get, as we get further, as we get further along. If, does that, is that helpful? Okay.
So I anticipate when we get to our next, next budget cycle, so when we get to staffing and when we're talking March, April, May this year, we're going to know a lot more about ourselves and be able to, you know, again, really be more strategic about what some of our asks are in that space, which may be, you know, additional resources, or it might be a redistribution of resources, knowing that, you know, something that we needed 10 years ago, we don't necessarily need at the capacity we had it for at that point. This, this is where we really need things to be able to push, push, you know, forward. So, and I think, and again, it's a credit to the board, because all of this work, the foundation of all of this work is around policy targets, right? To be able to solidify clarity within the system around what we're going after and be serious about that. And, and I can tell you, there's, there's, it's very clear across the system right now. There's a ripple effect of the seriousness and the priority based on that policy development. So again, I want to thank you for that and providing that, because that's really the foundation that we've been able to grow on up to this point and believe that that'll continue moving forward.
Mr. Current.
So I just want to echo a few things, but also just kind of point stuff out that, Lizzie said it earlier, and it's true, like, I think education has the biggest ability to change lives, right? It changes people's economic status. And, and so it's, it's cyclical, but, you know, I think that we're all sitting around here, you know, knowing that, wanting to do whatever we can. You mentioned a couple of areas though, and, and it's obvious that in many ways, the school districts have to pick up from failures in other areas of society. And so when you talk about, you know, students coming in unprepared or economically disadvantaged, it's not that we can't and shouldn't do it, but, you know, it kind of drops down to where we are. And I think it's important to acknowledge that it's not a crutch, it's, it's, it is what it is. But another area of that is, we're talking about staff and things that we want to, you know, potentially add. We just had a conversation last week when, you know, the voucher program takes away, what, $4.7 million from our school district? That's important for the community to understand that that's real dollars and that's real staff members, and that's affecting real students. And so we will try to do what we can and get creative, and I'm very confident that, you know, you guys have done that in the past to, to make sure that we have all the tools that the students need to be successful. But there are factors that are outside of our control that we're also dealing with. And I think that's important. The other thing I noticed was we are getting more diverse, maybe faster than we realized, because we were 74% white last year, we had this conversation, and we're now 70%. That's 4% change in one, in one calendar year. And so it is, it is growing fast, and I think that's important as well for the community to understand that. And that's good. It, it's good. But when you see the numbers of the black students being so much lower than everyone else, that's an area that we have to attack. And I'm, I'm excited to see how we do that. So thank you for the, the information.
And this is Carolyn.
And that's a perfect intro to my question, which is, we, we received an email from a parent who's concerned about the performance of students of color. And what are we doing to ensure that all students of color are doing well? Are we, I mean, it's a problem. I don't even know how to say it, but our black students are not performing as high. And why is that? And what are we doing to change that?
Right. So if we're, when we get to our next presentation, which is in December, we're going to look more holistically at what's, what our school and our district, you know, what our schools and our district look like. Because one thing that we're looking at at this data right now, these are all attainment goals. In other words, where is the student, the percent of students that are proficient? One of the questions that we're asking, and we can never hit those attainment goals unless students are growing, right? Growing. And so they may not have hit that proficiency mark, but how much have they grown? And so we are seeing growth within our school district across all of our subgroups and all of our areas, and you're going to see that when we do our presentation like next month. So everything that's listed up here is, because when we talk about all, all means all, every single one of these up here, these strategies up here are designed to meet individual students where they're at and push them and then wrap around the educator. So no matter the student's background and how that background intersects that they bring to the classroom, these types of strategies where you're looking at individual students within the classroom and applying what they need to move their skills is the key to getting this to move and getting all students up and successful when it comes to achievement. That's really where we have to, there is going to be no, no one size fits all or program. Like if, if that was the case, we would have already founded an education, right? If there was this program that we could put into place and all students would be successful. What does work though is rapidly maneuvering and making sure that we're responsive to every single student, no matter what background or what they bring to the table. Which is a, like, which is a segue to, I want to say in all of this, like, we're looking at these big assessment data, and it's a student that took an assessment on either one day or day, you know, days over time. And those data points don't indicate like necessarily where a student, what their hopes and dreams are or where they're going to be. That's one data point in time. And every time we look at that bar graph, every time we look at a number of percent, there is a student behind every single one of those numbers. There's educators at a school that have worked so hard to get the students to where they are right now. And so think about this, that as we're talking about this and like, we're not satisfied with where, where we are, but we have educators and children that are working hard every single day. And so how do we, how do we do that and honor also everything else within schools that make going to school fun, right? At the same, at the same time? Because it's, it's the whole, it's the whole child. So like keeping that in mind as well.
I like that Dr. Davis talked about partnerships, you know, and how we can look at what resources we have within the community, you know, and potentially maybe develop some new resources within the community. Because I've been, anyways, there are some data that's come out and it said if you start actual schooling, the younger you start it, the higher literacy scores are as you get older, right? And I think like our biggest challenge sometimes, and I, I love what we're doing here, but in addition to this is to think outside the box, right? Because we only get so many hours with these kids and so many days a year. So the more I think about it, like, community partnerships and maybe like developing different resources within the community or thinking outside the box so that there's more access to more positive things for all kids on a more regular basis, you know, I think is really a way maybe that as a society, as a nation, because this is a, these numbers follow state nationwide trends, you know, that as a country, we can get more kids on the right track. And I think that, anyways, I mean, long story short, short, I think the end of the day, we're going to do the best we can, and I think we'll hit these marks, but I know that my own children, like, they needed to read all summer. They had to go to a tutor, one to two hours a day a summer, one of them, and then, then all of a sudden, they just took off like a rocket ship. You know what I mean? But that's why I like why we'll do a community assessment, because I think that to really, really knock this stuff out of the park, I think it'll take multiple things and, you know, multiple partnerships. So I'm glad we're looking at those things.
Anyone else? I'd like to weigh in here. I've been thinking about these data a lot since the education committee meeting of a week or so ago. And there, there are a couple of things that, that came to mind for me. Many of us have seen this graphic design that shows three students, they're of different heights, they're trying to look over a fence to see some sort of ballgame activity. And one of the remedies for that is that each one is given something to stand on, and it's all the same height, the same sized box. Well, that's great for the child who is the tallest one, because he or she can then see over the fence. But the, the shortest one, who gets the same sized box as the other one, so kind of a one size fits all approach, is not able to see over the fence. So I was thinking about that in relationship to this. But the remedy, and then in the second drawing, is that each student gets a box that is tied to their height. So the shortest student gets the tallest box, the, excuse me, the shortest student gets the tallest box, the smallest student, I messed that up, the tallest student gets the smallest box, the shortest student gets the, the bigger box. So I was thinking about that in relation to this. This is a really a rough, this is really a rough analogy. But instead of that one size fits all, what are we doing in terms of reading and math to make that box bigger for the student who is the shortest one, the one who is farthest behind? And what are we doing for that tallest student, the one who has the, has skills, knowledge at the grade level, and they need something to stretch them? So we still give them a box, but it's not as big as the one for the child who's farther behind. So what I would like to see, and this gets into a future agenda item, but it's tied to this specific workshop, is I'd like to see at least a written report on what are we doing specifically for the students of a, of a, of an ethnic background, whether that's Hispanics or blacks or whatever that might be, those who are economically disadvantaged, those who have disabilities and EL students? How are we making their box bigger to make them more competitive with their classmates? Because I have seen these data, similar data, going back from my entire career on this board. And I don't see that we're making a lot of progress overall. And I, I judge that on, in terms of closing the achievement gap. When you look at those bar graphs and you're seeing discrepancies of 30 to 40 points, that's a lot. So what do we need to do to help those students grow perhaps faster than their peers?
Dr. Herzog, I've seen the, the visual that you are referring to, and I think that's, I've seen that used to compare equality versus equity.
Yes.
And what you bring up is an issue of equity. I've seen that illustration carried further and say, you know, and saying that the goal of education is to remove the barrier altogether, to remove. of education is to remove the barrier altogether, to remove the fence. And that is what our goal is. And, and in that, you know, extended version, there's a child in a wheelchair because that child in a wheelchair, you know, perhaps can't be propped on a box. So, the, the goal then is to remove the fence altogether and remove all barriers.
So, I will be asking as a future agenda item for administration to come back and tell us specifically, what are we doing to help our disadvantaged students close that achievement gap or that opportunity gap? And the same with our EL students, our students with disabilities and those who represent a different ethnic, ethnic group. When I look at those data, and I, first of all, I want to commend, should have started with this, commend administration for being open and transparent for sharing these data. That hasn't always been the case in my tenure with the district. But the next question is what, what do we do about that? We used to have a principal at Merrill Middle who would look at, who loved data and she would look at data like this and she would say, for example, if I look at slide 47 on students with and without disabilities or slide 48, economically disadvantaged or not, if your child was represented by that bar graph, that's the short one, would that be good enough for your child? And if the answer is no, then she had a, she had a second question, which was, then why is it okay for these students and their families? And, and another question I have coming out of this, I'm wondering, to what extent have we engaged, and it was on your last slide, have we engaged the families of these children? We always say that, not always, we, we sometimes say that parents know their children better than the rest of us. So, how are we reaching out to those families and asking them, what does your child need? What can we do to help your child be successful? We've invested as a district, over my time on the board, lots of money on hiring staff, resources, providing professional development. And that's to me kind of the, the big picture, maybe the one size fits all. But I'd like to have us delve deeper into how are we meeting the needs of these subgroups? And if that means, and since engagement is one of our strategic goals, how are we engaging the families? I have no doubt that our parents are interested and I have absolutely no doubt, doubt that we have some of the finest teachers in the state of Wisconsin in this school district. But we have to, we have to help all these children be successful. A positive and strong education system is key to economic development. And we have business owners in this community who are looking at and waiting for us to make some improvement in these areas so that they can attract more workers into their businesses, into high paying jobs. So, I see this all connected, but for me, we'll start with a staff report, it could be a written report, on what specifically are we doing for these subgroups to help them be successful?
And what that.
I would say I don't need to add anything to it, I would just second that request. I agree with that, your request for that.
And what that will, what that will look like will be us being able to go into a little bit more detail on those rapid cycles of improvement. Because we don't take all of our African-American kids and say, well, they get something here and all of our kids that are low socioeconomic, they get something here. We look at each child to be able to see what specific skill set, you know, they need particularly. And that's where we do the customization. If that follows trends, then those are, those are things that just kind of tease themselves out. But what we'll be able to do, just as, as a follow-up to, to the request, what we'll be able to do is just identify, you know, with our cycles of improvement, you know, what that means and we can give a little bit of perspective around, you know, what is a teacher's perspective of that? Again, answering the question, then, you know, what is the outreach been to parents, you know, as we're, as we're moving, moving through that? And I think, you know, maybe an illustration of that would help, you know, talk about the customization because it's built in, it's built into the system, like, it's, it's built into the structure because it allows us to be able to really specifically see that skill development. And that gets at the, the individual, individual student and what their, what their needs are. So, there has been progress on that as we're, as we're moving forward. Again, it's built into those monthly rapid cycles of improvement, which gives us target areas, which allows us then to be able to build the resources that are specific towards what our needs are. So, we're not just saying, we need people that, you know, can help us with our literacy scores. And, you know, and people will come in, but like, so what are you going to do? Well, if you could read this book. Well, like, we want to be much more specific and targeted for that because if people are spending their valuable time, and I expect us to be able to have businesses say, listen, you know, we'd like some employees for a little bit of service hours, right? But when we do that, we want to be really targeted to make sure that we're moving the needle. So, again, it's built in, the new, the new system that we have right now at an elementary level, it's built in. So, the, so the written report, I would anticipate being able to tease that out a little bit. And that's something we could follow up on.
And I think in part, this is just asking for information that's already out there, but it's a matter of communicating it to the board and to the community. Any other comments or questions? This is Selaji.
I'm going to make one that may seem like it's really coming out of somewhere different from this conversation, but as we've had this conversation, I've pulled up, and I'm probably going to say it wrong, but Scarborough's reading rope. And it just has been weighing on my mind really heavily. I have been a parent before I was on the school board who was concerned about my child's ability to learn to read. And so, if there's any parent out there, I'm just sharing this for that one parent who may be listening and, listening because they have concerns about their own young child's literacy development. I would just encourage our community members too that are listening and wanting to know how to help, a look at that rope is really telling about what we can do. So, the things that help students learn to read are background knowledge, vocabulary, understanding language structures, that's like nursery rhymes and poems. Those are things that are really easy for our community to support, helping our students get that background knowledge by going to the museums, going to the libraries, singing nursery rhymes to your kids. I feel like the school's big responsibility is that bottom rope, the phonological awareness with syllables and phonemes and blends and digraphs. So, just to any parent out there who may be feeling like they need to know what they can do to help your child, I'd just encourage you to look at that rope and know that that upper strand is something the parents and the community can do and that bottom strand is our responsibility, it's the school district. So.
I just have a closing comment.
Okay.
More so for the public or what, whatnot. I mean, everyone knows, but I wanted to emphasize, well, not everyone knows, but this is the most important thing, you know, I, in my opinion, that we're doing as a board right now. The most important thing is to get this right. And I believe if we do get this right, this district's going to take off like a rocketship. And that's my closing comment.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Ms. Conrad and thank you, Dr. Brown. I know that a lot of effort has gone into this with the guidance of Dr. Davis and what he's learning about the science of reading and serving at the state level. And this is something, I agree that Mr. Wright just said, we, we have to get this right, no pun intended. And we, we make sure that all means all and we close those opportunity gaps, or I bet some call it achievement gaps, with our, our students, with our various students group. So, thanks again for your excellent presentation tonight. Okay, thank you. So, moving on, we have the consent agenda, consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. There will, these will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. We actually only have one item to approve. The board will consider approval of number one, personnel and a temporary appointments and salary. So, move.
Second.
Please call the roll. Was it Ben and Selaji? Yes. Selaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Karnt?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Resolution carries? Thank you very much. We've already had one request for a future agenda item tied to tonight's workshop. Are there any other requests for agenda items coming forward? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to go on to announcements. I want to formally welcome our newest school board member, Mrs. Angie Lee. She was appointed by this board on November 3rd from a strong field of seven candidates. And so, we are now back to full strength as a board with seven, seven board members. And so, we welcome Mrs. Lee to our board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I want to note that Friday is a special day across this country. It's called Veterans Day, it used to be called Armistice Day. It was first initiated in 1918 on the 11th month, the 11th day, the 11th hour, to note the conclusion of hostilities in World War I. It's come to be known as Veterans Day, a day set aside for us to recognize not only those who have made the ultimate sacrifice on behalf of our nation, but also anyone who has served in a military uniform. And because this, because this Friday is a professional development day, I believe, for our staff, is that correct?
Yes.
There are two Veterans Day programs I'm aware of that will be held tomorrow on Thursday. The first of these is at North High School, starting at nine o'clock in the morning for all veterans, beginning with a social and a program to honor them at 10 o'clock. As Owen noted earlier, it will involve some musical tributes as well as a present, another presentation. And at 2:00 tomorrow afternoon, Perry Tipler Middle School and Alps will be also having a Veterans Day program. So, if veterans are listening out there, you can contact the school and please plan to attend so that we can honor you within our, our school system. Any other announcements? Okay, then I, I'm sorry, Mr. Karnt?
Liz, is it your birthday today?
I forgot, yeah, it is.
Happy birthday.
Thanks.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And she spent it with a school board.
Yes.
So, awesome.
Yes. It's a big one.
So, I would then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second. Please call the roll. Wright and Karnt? That is correct now.
Yeah.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Karnt?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Selaji?
Aye. You hesitated.
I know.